How many people stayed to the end and how many people need to have a cardiac doctor look at them this week? So I see a many show that easily 60% of the show of the hand, so we will take that. But I think it's just incredible what they've done and the council was recognized them with a proclamation, and so here we go. This is a proclamation declaring congratulations to the Kansas City Chiefs on their, and I thought I would never say this in my entire lifetime, back-to-back Super Bowl championships. And whereas the City of Independence takes great pride in recognizing outstanding achievements in sports, especially those that bring pride and honor and recognition to our community. And whereas the Kansas City Chiefs, our beloved football team, have once again showcased their exceptional talents, determination, and teamwork by securing back-to-back Super Bowls championships last year and this year. And whereas the Kansas City Chiefs have had a relentless pursuit of excellence under the leadership of head coach Andy Reid and the exceptional performance of all the team members, pardon me, including our outstanding quarterback Patrick Mahomes, having brought immense joy and pride to the City of Independence and the entire Kansas City metro area. And whereas Patrick Mahomes in particular has distinguished himself as one of the most extraordinary talents in the history of the NFL, earning his third MVP in the Super Bowl in recognition of his unparalleled skills, leadership, dedication to the game. And whereas the Kansas City Chiefs remarkable achievements serves us as inspiration to aspiring athletes and fans alike, demonstrating the importance of perseverance, teamwork, and unwavering commitment to excellence. And now therefore we, the City of Independence, want to recognize and give them our heartfelt congratulations on this day for their back-to-back historic Super Bowl championships and a copy of this proclamation presented to the Kansas City Chiefs in recognition for their outstanding accomplishments. So with that, I just want to submit this, and I didn't want to say thank you for allowing us to take the time to do that, but I just think it's truly extraordinary. And around 9:30 last night, none of us thought we'd be talking about that, did we? But they've got to be down by 10 points before they decide to play. I'm not sure what that is. Anyone else want to follow up on that? All right. With that being said, Mr. City Manager, we've got the agenda items. We've got a resolution requesting the Missouri Department of Transportation to install additional streetlights. Would you like to fire away on that, Mr. City Manager?
I would be glad to.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this resolution, as indicated on the agenda, was requested by council members Hobart and McCandless. Several years ago, the city was awarded $2.5 million through the federal surface transportation program to bring complete street improvements to 40 Highway. And that project's been done, and it's remarkable. One of the issues that was noticed upon completion of the project, that the sidewalks that were installed were added to the north side of 40 Highway, but the streetlights remained on the south side of the road there. So for those further safety enhancements, it was suggested by council members Hobart and McCandless that as that state rideaway, we ask MoDOT for their help and support on that project. As we dove further into this issue, this is a bit of a unique one in that the federal funding agreement actually places the responsibility for those streetlights on the city. So I said again, that's a bit rare in that the state maintains both state and federal highways here in Independence, but the funding agreement does require us to do that and has resources to do so. So Power and Light has already went out and staked the locations for these streetlights. The winter weather slowed that progress down just a bit, but the streetlights are forthcoming and should be there. So we would just kindly ask that, you know, this resolution, you know, just move on from it. We don't need it because we're going to get this work done, which is the best outcome for everybody involved.
Any questions or comments from anyone? Okay. Anything else on item number one, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you. Then I bring us to item number two, resolution requesting the Missouri Department of Transportation providing timely maintenance of all traffic control devices installed along the state and federal highways within the corporation of the City of Independence. Councilmember McCandless, I believe this is yours, and so would you like to fire away?
Of course. So you may have noticed, we have lots of highway miles through the City of Independence. We have a 70, we have 40 Highway, 78 Highway, 291. And as you drive along, you may also notice that sometimes the safety signs are down. Either the little triangle that they get hooked into is left behind, or the actual sign is there from motor vehicle accidents that hit them and leave them behind. My concern is that MoDOT has not been as timely in replacing those as we had hoped. I did just a small survey, and I found 40 of them that were either down or missing. And these are important thoroughfares for our community. So there's not an easy way to report those one at a time to MoDOT. And so my request is a resolution that implores MoDOT to come in and do a survey of their roads and replace the safety signs all at once so that we can be back up to a safe community. Certainly, the police want those there because it makes for better traffic flow. So that was the impetus for this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, anyone else, pardon me, questions or comments on this one?
Okay.
Very good? Okay. Excellent. Pardon me. This will open up the floor to any citizens' request to talk about this item. We didn't have anybody sign up, so I don't believe there are any. So that will bring us to the presentation by the Independent Square Association. Mr. City Manager, if you can kind of tee that one up for us.
I'll be glad to do so. And as the executive director's making his way, I'll just remind the council with that last resolution, that will appear on your March 4th agenda, since we heard no objections to doing so. But moving on to our next item, the city is very happy and pleased to welcome the Independent Square Association Executive Director Jeff Rogers here tonight to provide an update on all the many exciting activities and initiatives that are afoot on our historic square. So I will yield to Mr. Rogers.
Good evening. Independent Square Main Street, who does business as the Independent Square Association, is focused on keeping our historic business and civic district as a place where the community gathers for events and celebrations. In fact, last night, there were over 100 of us at Three Trails Brewing to cheer on the Chiefs with a film crew from Fox 4 there. So quite a fun evening. We also had multiple other locations hosting watch parties, including Diamond Bowl and Big John's. We're a place where businesses can grow and be supported, not only by the surrounding neighborhoods, but also as a destination for the region. We also take pride in our role as one of the caretakers for not only the historic buildings in the area, but also for the stories and histories that accompany this land. In 2023, we celebrated the past, present, and future of Polly's Pop, first bottled over 100 years ago. The event drew several thousand people. We're young and old, we're immersed in all things that pop. There were bubbles and balloons, popcorn and pop music, the games, the Suds Pit, and the concert were all offered free of charge to the public who attended. And they really enjoyed that celebration of a beloved product from Independence while also celebrating activities around Independence Day. All summer long, we offered free concerts on Saturday evenings with local and regional acts playing at a variety of venues, including Three Trails Brewing, Courthouse Exchange, Main Street Coffee House, and Liberty Lounge. We have fondly called that Sounds on the Square, and it's become quite a thing. Liberty Lounge is an outdoor private park that's maintained by the Square Association. And for Saturday concerts, Liberty Lounge is a spot where all ages, but a lot of families tend to gather there, bringing lawn chairs or sitting at our picnic tables and enjoying free music. Guests often bring food from other area businesses and sit under those patio lights. And I had meant to forward this presentation here, and I'm not doing so. I don't know if, um, do I need to hit this? Not sure. Pardon? Yeah. Yeah, try those two. Okay, well, just imagine pictures of all these events happening, okay? You can picture it in your head. This summer, we also offered Saturday covered wagon rides every Saturday morning. Residents and visitors were able to take a trip around the historic area in a covered wagon accompanied by living history interpreters. In period dress, the interpreters recount what it was like to be a native, a resident, a pioneer who lived or passed through Independence in the 1800s. This program also, free to participants. I've got IT here. There we go. So now you can, now you can see us cheering on where we are at Polly's Pop, the Suds Pit, the concerts in Liberty Lounge. So the, um, the period dress that the interpreters are in, they help recount what life was like for our natives, residents, and pioneers who lived or passed through Independence during the 1800s. This program also offered free to any participant who comes to join us on those Saturday mornings. And then as the weather cooled down, our activities did not. You can see here, we have, we added this year skeletons traversing many of the buildings on the square. You might remember those. We also dress up the square for the fall with hay bells or straw bells, pumpkins and mums and cornstalks, and you name it, to make sure that people, once again, feel comfortable arriving as whether they're a tourist or a local neighbor. In addition to our streets hosting Santa Calagon, we have a lot of smaller events in the fall, like Doggy Date Night, which again is a, quite the draw. This is an evening where people can bring their dog up, make reservations at restaurants, and have a meal specifically created for their dog by one of our partners, who is Brookside Barkery, has been for the last four years with us. But a lot of fun for that particular event, with all proceeds going to Shep's Place Senior Dog Sanctuary. We also host Ghoul's Night Out, which is a shopping event, but it's grown to include actors that haunt the streets during that evening and shops. So evening shoppers, as they also dress up, enjoy food, drink, shopping, and interacting with those performers. So it is a very fun way to get out during the fall. This year, we also introduced a few new activities to commemorate Veterans Day, including a parade that was organized by ISD's Junior ROTC and a Veterans Day play that was produced by the Independent Square Association and directed by Nancy Appert, telling the story of female veterans during World War II. Our 2023 season wrapped up with our holiday events, and that includes square lighting. We're nearly 1,000 people gathered to watch host Matt Stewart from Fox 4, listen to choirs, cheer on dancers, welcome Santa and Mrs. Claus, of course, before turning on the lights. Kids were then able to spend time at the Uptown Market, where they could make crafts, play games, and meet the Clauses, again, provided at no charge. And on December 1st, we put on what has probably become our signature event, Living Windows. And I think almost all of you have been to that particular event. Thousands of people come to enjoy a true hallmark moment as the windows of our shops and businesses come to life with the sounds and scenes of the holidays. This is a large undertaking that involves actually hundreds of volunteers who perform as dancers and choirs, actors. We host Santa and Mrs. Claus again for visits with the kids and a holiday market for pop-up vendors. Getting the word out on these activities can be challenging. We live in a time where we all consume our information from different platforms, from the print we read to the videos we watch. Getting information to our intended audiences is a challenge. For example, in addition to our posters and local flyers and bag stuffers, we use targeted advertising and social media posts. We purchase ads on radio stations and in magazines. We place digital ads and send out press releases and contacted all of our local media friends for PR throughout, for news stories. Because of our contract with the city, we were able to expand our reach and our programs. Here you can see some of the expenditures that that contract has helped cover the costs for. So most of them focus on advertising and marketing. The Living History Program includes the cost of paying for Pioneer Trails Adventure Wagon and the staff that runs that wagon, a stipend for some of the actors that performed during that period. Sounds on the Square, we've got bands that are brought in advertising. We were on the bridge radio station all summer long, and we had lots and lots of people who I met during the summer that said, you know, we heard about you because of the music on the bridge, and we wanted to come check you out. So we knew that was working. So you can see a lot of the different things, over $41,000 in expenses through the six months there listed. The results, well, our social media outreach reached 274,000 people. We had 33,397 visits specifically to our site. Our link clicks were up 20%, and our contact interaction was up 17%. So that link click just means that someone actually did more than just look at the post as it went by, but they actually engaged with it in some way. Our website visits are at 3,400 a month, which is up 20% over the previous year. We are regrowing our website. And during the pandemic, we actually had our website taken hostage, and we abandoned it. We weren't going to pay for it to come back. And so we've had to regrow the people who can find us because we have a new URL. But that is happening. Our PR views were over 4 million. So for our PR outreach, 4,568,777, and the value of that outreach was almost $100,000. So some big numbers there, but we've had some moments that actually went national in the last year on that outreach, and that's what caused some of that value to increase. Our CID difference in the last six months has been $5,000 more than the previous year period of those same six months. That would equate to an increased spending in the district of over $500,000. So that also tells us, hey, the things that we're doing is bringing in people that aren't just coming for the free, but they're actually spending their dollars in the area as well. But we've also been working at the same time diligently to achieve the top accreditation from both Missouri Main Street Connection and Main Street America. We appreciate that Councilmember Perkins last week shared this information during the city council meeting. This designation recognizes our deployment of the four-point approach that was developed by the National Historic Trust. As a historic preservation organization, we work hard to not only meet those standards of that organization, covering revitalization work that creates a sustainable and community-driven Main Street program, but to exceed those standards. We're recognized now as a high-achieving organization addressing economic development through the revitalization of the historic district. This designation recognizes our strong historic preservation focus and our active board and committees and all that they are accomplishing. In 2023, $1.1 million in private funds were spent on building improvements. Most of those were facade improvements, and what that really means to us, not only do they look nice, but it really cements them in place for decades to come. And so it's wonderful to see that type of investment being made in those historic structures. The designation enhances our ability to apply for grants and places us on maps and lists that are sought out by historic tourism enthusiasts. We will soon receive signs approved by the Missouri Department of Transportation recognizing our status that can be placed along the interstate and at entrances to our district. And you can see, we're standing there holding a replica of that sign, and we're able to purchase additional ones, and we will be doing so. We're proud to have the designation, and we want other people to know it as they enter our area. I want to close with the strong support of the city's staff and our elected officials is helping us to amplify those stories of our past, the great things that are happening in our present, and the exciting plans being made for the future and in our most historic part of Independence. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Any questions or comments? Well, I just want to say, congratulations for this achievement. When you handed this to us, I had no idea this was this amount of work. I mean, that's a homework project and a half. So I just wanted to say, congratulations, great job. I know I see you there at many, many events, many times, and I just want to say thank you for all the work, your dedication, your commitment to the square and our community. So just thank you very much.
Absolutely. And a big thank you to our board, because they really helped make it happen.
Absolutely. Perfect. Thank you very much.
And can we just recognize folks on the board? If you're here, you want to just raise your hand so people can say howdy?
Please, there we go.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
And I would add my congratulations for the Main Street Award. That's really great news. There's what, is that, am I correct, one of seven in the state? Nine in the state? Okay. Great. Well, seven is better than nine, but still, that's good. And so just kudos for all you guys do.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. City Manager, this brings us to the Arch program. You want to give a little overview or?
I am going to go ahead and welcome Battalion Chief John Burrell, who can do this much better justice than I can. So he's here to give the council an update on this program.
Good evening, council members. My name is John Burrell. I'm the battalion chief with the Fire Department and also a team member with the Arch program. This week actually marks 10 months since the Arch program was formally kind of stood up and began operations. And I'm excited to give you some brief information of what has been accomplished in 2023. But before I do, I do want to make sure that the focus is on the people who made this possible every day. So I apologize, guys, but would you stand up for me real fast, Justin, Cindy, and Matt? So this is the Arch team. The good things that I'm going to talk about is because of their efforts. Justin and Cindy are social workers, and they're not average social workers, they're licensed clinical social workers, so they have thousands of hours of experience in their fields. And it just so happened that the fields that they specialized in suited us perfectly. So from day one, they were leveraging their experience for our community. They are 100% supported by the social, or by the Health and Animal Services Department. They are members of that department through a grant. They are, without a doubt, a heart of the program. We can't do what we do without them. Matt is a community paramedic. He came to us with 17 years of experience in emergency services, multiple departments, and a healthcare settings, which is a little bit unusual for a firefighter, but it's worked out particularly well for us. He also has a head for numbers and has worked a lot of the data that I'm going to present today. Thank you, guys, very much. I think we can all can attest, the team, myself, the leaders over there, multi-departmental teams are hard, different command structures, how do you even take breaks? Who do you report to? Who pays for this? It has been difficult, but I think we're all okay with that. We see the benefit day in and day out, and we also see the future of what this could be. So I'm just going to give you just a little bit of information of kind of what's happened in the past 10 months that we have done, we've had normal operations. Arch has responded to 746 emergency incidents with 588 follow-up visits. So if you, I mean, if you don't hear anything else I say, know that the call volume is there, and the team is running, and the team is going. If we look at total time in service, the hours they have every day based off the call volume and the follow-up information, that's about one community contact every 90 minutes. And I'll tell you right now, those contacts aren't typically short. They aren't typically five to 10 minutes, they're longer. The volume is there, the need is there, and the team is meeting that need. Arch canceled or released 703 Independence 911 units. That is a significant number. So every single one of those, 703, that's a fire truck, it's an ambulance, it's a police officer. Every single one of those means they are in service and available to answer other calls. It bothers me a little bit that I can't stratify that number better, that I can't explain it better, and we're working on that. For example, I wish I could show the amount of times that the Arch team took a call, they remained on scene, and other emergency units were available to answer calls that were closer, that they wouldn't have otherwise been able to, a domestic violence situation, a cardiac arrest, things that are a little bit more time-critical. Just because I can't stratify that better now doesn't mean it doesn't happen. 703 is a significant number. Arch completed 176 transports. Now, I need to make something very clear, Arch is not a taxi service. It's not a taxi service. We transport for two reasons. If it's going to have a positive effect in the 911 system, so it's going to divert other calls, it's going to resolve the immediate crisis, or to reduce barriers, because there are barriers sometimes. Just to get from point A to point B can be a difficult time. Emergency services, we still typically only have one trick, it's take them to the hospital. That involves an ambulance transport, that involves a whole bunch of different things. It also involves a bill. And so if we look at 176 transports, and then we dive down into the data and we say, okay, how many of these incidents would an ambulance have been used to take someone to the ER, which is tough sometimes to prove, when we operate on the conservative side? We look, we get that number, we multiply that by around $1,200 a transport, which is typically what a community member is responsible for, for an ambulance transport, and we come up to around $166,000 of community savings over 10 months. And that's community savings, individual savings, people seeking care, and instead of going by ambulance, they go by us. And that also means that they often go to the right facility, where I'm not even diving into the fact that these are ER beds that aren't occupied in some cases, in many cases. I'm also diving into the fact that this isn't ER time, I'm not diving into the fact that these ambulances are then freed up for other services. There's secondary and tertiary effects to this. Community members' engagement with 911 services decreased an average of 40% following engagement with Arch providers. So on bad days, on days when we're kind of sitting there wondering, I think we're doing the right thing, or are we spending taxpayer dollars wisely? I fall back on this number. So what we do is, when someone comes into the Arch system, we catch a call, or we're referred by community services, however it goes down, we look at the preceding 90 days of data in the 911 system, mainly fire and EMS. We see what their involvement was, and then they engage with our clinicians. Sometimes days, sometimes weeks, we've had a few people been in the system for months. And then once they're released, we look at the after 90 days. We saw a decrease in 40% from 40% of 911 system involvement pre to post. That is a significant number. That's a significant number. Now, I could, I could manipulate this, you know, we could say, oh, gosh, we've only got 10 patients in this system. We only look at our 10 patients, and they're the ones that maybe were really connected well, and maybe were the most responsive. And I could use that number, and we could make that 40% dance all over the place. This is our whole dataset. Over 135 individuals were released from the system. Some of them continue to use the 911 system the same way they had before. This is the good, the not-so-good, and everything in between. 40% reduction in 911 services is significant. And to be very honest with you, we think that number is a little bit higher, and in interest to be conservative, 40% is where we're at right now. I would be, I would be really remiss if I didn't mention we're not standalone. An ambulance, ambulance is only so good as having an ER to transport to. You have to have definitive services, and we're not definitive services. We're guardrails. We bounce people back to care. We are not the care itself. We bounce people back to care. I could spend a half hour talking about all our community connections. I'm not going to. But so many different agencies that have welcomed us and are working with us, and we've been able to establish connections with, has been considerable. And it is all about relationships. It is. I also need to highlight this team and the amount of time they spend connecting with people, because that really is what matters. I mean, I could walk out outside with a piece of paper and just start going down the list when I meet somebody, let's try this number, let's try this number. But really, what we need is at 2:00 PM on that corner, we need someone that has the connections. So when Cindy sees that individual, she needs to... So when Cindy sees that individual, she wants to connect with resources, she can call somebody she knows, and they pick up the phone, they say it's Cindy, and then they know who she is, she knows who they are, they know the capabilities. That is an ongoing task, an ongoing job, and goodness, we still have so many more connections to make. But without those services supporting us, without those connections that this team is making, this system just doesn't work. So looking forward, what do we have going for 2024? There's a lot of things, just a few of the highlights. We are really excited about the addition of a full-time substance use co-responder from the Heartland Center for Behavioral Change. So this is something that they approached us about, putting a co-responder on the car. And basically, this person is a substance use specialist. We go out on a call, and they tag along with us, and they have direct access and direct knowledge of the services such as addiction services, addiction treatment, inpatient and outpatient care, detox. We have had this rolling now for a week, we're very excited about this. They come and hang out with us at Station One, hop on the rig and go on every call with us. We're also pretty excited about the relationships and the connections it's making between us and Heartland as we seek to serve our community better. Something else, so three weeks ago, Dr. Gustafson, our medical director, approached me and asked what our interest was in participating in a program called Suboxone Bridge. This is interesting, it's a little bit cutting edge. So when someone is suffering some opioid withdrawal, that is, there's a high likelihood of relapse. And so the idea is Arch would go out on these calls, they'd meet an individual in this moment who would want addiction services. If they can't be connected in that moment, there's a possibility they're going to suffer from those withdrawal symptoms and relapse. So what would happen is the Arch program, in a highly controlled environment, would administer one dose of the Suboxone to bridge them until they get services. Now, this is part of a statewide pilot program. Seven programs are participating so far, we're working towards becoming the eighth. Lastly, and the one that I am equally excited and terrified about, we're looking at a large report system upgrade in 2024. This is something that the Fire Department is investigating, you'll probably hear more about this from us here before too long, but it's all about data, right? I can get up here and I can spin a great story, it's all about data. And so in an effort to be transparent, in an effort to be honest, in an effort to know ourselves and know how well we're doing across the board, we're looking at a report system upgrade, and Arch would be a part of that. This is something actually that American Medical Response, our EMS provider, is doing this month. So I'm really excited about the possibility of being able to look across the entire Fire and EMS spectrum and track readmission rates, and track what's going on with individuals, provide good case management, good oversight, reduce readmission rates into the 911 system. We hope that's something that's going to be happening this summer. So I need to apologize, we were going to have a community member here to tell a little bit of a story about their experience with Arch. Unfortunately, they had a medical situation came up, and they couldn't attend, but part of the reason we're here tonight is a question about the future of the Arch program. Cindy and Justin are grant-funded, and that grant ends in July. And so we're here to kind of start the conversation with those hard questions about what happens after July. Right now, we have one community paramedic and another half community paramedic with me, I'm in and out of the EMS division, so I work part-time for them, and then also we have our two social workers. Optimistically, what we would like to see is support for our two social workers, an addition of a second community paramedic, and an addition of a second vehicle. And if we were able to do that, we will be able to field two full-time Arch crews for the community. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any questions? Please proceed.
Hello, we're glad you're here. I have a couple of questions, some of these are just clarifications as I was following along. So of your 746 incidents and your 588 follow-up visits, those were for 135 individuals?
No, those are individuals that have been released from the Arch program. There's quite a bit more that are still in the program.
Okay, so the 135 are the ones who've been released from your program?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And your community savings are savings to people who would have to pay their ambulance transport, okay? And when you talked about your 176 transports to, for behavioral health and addiction, where are you taking those folks?
We have a whole host of locations. Sometimes it's just an address, sometimes it's a facility. I have a whole listing of those, if you'd be interested to see. By and large, our transports are to the Crisis Center, the Health and Independence.
So Comprehensive Mental Health Crisis Center?
Yes, ma'am. And there's a fair amount of ER transports in there as well.
I know you're going to do a better slice and dice of your data, but it'd be helpful to understand how many of those are going to end up in the ER anyway, and how many are going to end up at Comprehensive, just kind of help stratify cost. Certainly, an ER visit's more expensive than a visit to Comprehensive. And when you talked about your readmission rate, you're not talking about readmission to an institution like CenterPointe or Comprehensive, you're just talking about encounters with the 911 system?
Yes, ma'am, I apologize.
That's okay, just making sure I'm following your pieces here.
I understand.
So the grant ends in July, and who is your granting agency right now?
That question I'll probably have to defer to...
Hi, I'm Christina Hyman, I'm Health and Animal Services Director for the City of Independence. The grant actually ends on June 30th. It's the Workforce Grant that came through the State of Missouri, so Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services. They had a grant that came through just a couple of years ago and was focused on mental health, and licensed clinical social workers were one of the groups that was allowed, so that's when we decided we'd jump on the chance.
And certainly, the state will be getting $88 million in opioid settlement funds. Is it likely that they will reissue that grant?
So far, they have not indicated on any phone calls that they are looking to do that. Most of the time, when the state announces that they're going to do a grant, they announce it about four months ahead of time on a phone call with their local public health agencies, and then we'll finally see the contracts come through. There have not been a mention, the last phone call was last Tuesday, that was not one of the grants that they were looking at extending.
Okay, and the total cost of this program as it exists now, and what are you anticipating if you double the size of your program?
So right now, I'm looking back 475? Right now, the program is costing approximately $475,000 in staffing each year.
So you're looking to scare up a million bucks a year?
We would love to double the program. Right now, we would like to just keep the program going. That is our biggest issue, is that we know the start of our new fiscal year, we right now do not have money set aside. It is, I can tell you right now, spoiler, there will be a budget package where I request to be able to keep my social workers onboard.
And are you seeking other grant sources to sustain this program?
We are. We have one, I don't know if they actually put in the application today, but I know that they have the last of the information they need in order to submit an application. That's a federal grant that they're looking at doing. We are scouring everything we possibly can. I'm very proud, the Health and Animal Services Department, we go after a ton of grants, and we're really good at getting them, but finding one that is specific that will support this has been more difficult.
And I'm just curious, and maybe this question is for Mr. Burrell, the Suboxone Bridge Program, is CenterPointe also participating in that? Because many of those folks end up coming in with overdoses to the ER as their primary source of care.
No, ma'am, to my knowledge, they aren't. This is a pilot program exclusively for community paramedic programs across the state.
Okay. I know that CenterPointe is getting ready to start an epic program, which is for taking peer counselors, and when folks come in through the ER, they get matched up with a peer counselor onsite, and they leave with a peer counselor. So it would seem like the Bridge program would twin very well with that. I know Bridge programs have been used in lots of different states, so there's great data out there of using them in ER. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Ma'am, if I may?
Please proceed.
I also wanted to mention, as we're looking for additional funding, so we're a part of a working group across the state that's looking at, what we were told is additional funding for alternative response programs through Medicare/Medicaid. It's rarely been done. We're looking at Oregon just today, this working group, so there's possibilities with that, it's just the legislation hasn't caught up with it yet, something relatively new. In addition, we're meeting with CenterPointe, we're just early on the process, they're discussing the possibility of reducing readmission, real readmission rates, and using community paramedics, and with a funding component to that, but we're very early on. Absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Briefly, Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I was just curious, Mr. Burrell, if, or excuse me, Battalion Chief, if you'd seen other cities or other organizations start to develop these programs, or similar programs in Missouri or across the metro yet?
Yes, sir. Kansas City is looking at this as a joint program between their mental health catchment provider and their community paramedics. I've heard whispers that at least some are just considering this as well. So it's becoming more common across the casey metro region, but the way it's structured and the way it's funded seems different, just on every level.
Gotcha. I was just curious, I wondered, you know, if it became a more popular model, that perhaps funding would become a little more common, you know?
I think it will be. The conversations we've had just today, even statewide, looking at the legislative steps that need to be taken to open up that funding, that just, for example, just even finding a way that community paramedics are part of that billing process is new and takes time, but I think it will.
Gotcha. Well, certainly appreciate the work you're doing and work you've done. You know, I'm a big fan, so thanks a lot.
Anyone else, other questions?
Agreed, I appreciate the work, appreciate the update on this. I had an opportunity there to ride with you earlier in the year, and I appreciated that. And so I, you know, I think Councilmember McCandless asked all the questions that I had, so I'll just listen in on that, so that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, other questions before we wrap up? Mr. City Manager, I don't know if this question is on base or off base, we're also got some opioid money coming down the pike for us, is that already positioned, or how do we use that, or isn't that even appropriate for this request here?
I think based on the discussion that the council had last week, the path we're marching down is to form an advisory committee that could then establish criteria and accept proposals to make sure that money is allocated in a way that's consistent with council goals and furthers the outcomes that the council's trying to achieve.
Okay, perfect, yep. I remember that now, when you mentioned that, so please forgive me for that situation. Perfect. Anyone else? All right. Battalion Chief, thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you very much for your work on this. I just got one other question. You talked about a lot of statistics and things like that. Do you have one story of one person that you've worked with that you said, we made a difference? You know, it's like the star story that speakers tell, you know, when they throw the starfish into the ocean and made a difference for that one. Where's one that you think you've made a difference for, you know, one individual?
So those three individuals over there kind of have all the stories, and I hear bits and pieces, but I will say, one thing that I didn't expect was when they arrive on scene, the natural inclination is to focus on the individual who's going through the particular circumstances, but we found a lot of value in how they interact with everyone else, the family, because typically, those are the ones that we can have the most impact on. Sometimes people chart their path, and it's going to take a lot to change those things, but the ones around them, the children, the families, the parents, that's happened some of the most impactful moments. There was a case not too long ago where a parent was suffering considerably because of the decisions of a family member. We couldn't reach that family member, but the team spent a month, a month and a half walking them through, not only just the process for how to handle living with someone who is difficult, but also the legal process, which has forced them to kind of start to understand how that works, where do you go for this, where do you go for that? And to be that support, to call back, did you get the order of ex parte figured out? Okay, let's go to the next step of the process, let's talk about guardianship. That's been an area where they have particularly shined, and where I'm particularly happy to say that there's a difference. We can't always help individuals, but there's a lot of people around them that need that, just enough support to get back on their feet.
Yeah, there's that sense of hope, that there's some opportunity for hope here with you've got chaos rolling around in your life because of somebody that's suffering from mental illness or suffering from addiction, and what I'm hearing is you help those family members who are swirling around that person's life chaos.
Yes, sir. City employees, no less, which is unusual. A lot of times, people are a little bit surprised who we work for. This sort of service is starting to occur more frequently, but it's not common. The fact that the city puts employees, puts people out there to help resolve these sort of incidents, and will walk with people sometimes weeks after an emergency, that's unusual, and I think it's appreciated.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work, and thank you for presenting this idea to us. I remember the very first time you brought it to us, and I was impressed with that, and again, impressed with the presentation at night, so well done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, Mr. City Manager, financial update?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, it has become our practice over the last several years to gradually work our way toward the submitted budget proposal, which occurs at the first study session each May, for the city staff to begin providing some updates to the city council about both the current fiscal year, as well as the one that we are planning to submit a budget for in May, so the council can kind of start to see what we as city staff are seeing and considerations thereof. So this evening, our budget manager, Melissa Sill, is going to give that update to the city council, and then happy to take any questions you have after that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm excited tonight to present to you the mid-year financial update and forecast. So here, we just have an overview of the agenda. I'm going to touch on three main areas in general, a review of the current fiscal year as we are heading into the latter half of that, and getting ready to prepare our 24-25 budget, an update of the five-year financial forecast, and then finally, a look at some of the constraints that we're facing in our budget next year, as well as future years. So my intent tonight is to give you a high-level review of the current financial condition, and then in April, we're scheduled to come back again, once we have some, you know, projection numbers in from the departments, and we'll be able to have a first look at that budget and see where we're at before we come back in May, to give you the first study session look at the proposed budget. The one overlying theme for the presentation tonight is that the City of Independence as a whole, and especially for the General Fund, is on a much more solid financial foundation than we have been in the past few years. But I say that, understanding that we still have a lot of work to do in future years. So we'll talk a little bit about that as we get along further, and, you know, what we can do to mitigate some of those issues and constraints that we're looking at. So real quick, I know these numbers are kind of difficult to see, and I made them as large as I possibly could, but this is a look at our General Fund revenues. So I have included what I am projecting for 23-24. Just for reference, this includes our actuals from July through December, and then for most budget lines, including the expenditures that we'll see later on, I used last year's actuals, unless I knew that there were going to be additional revenues or expenditures, and then I modified those. I'll also talk about in the revenues, when we're looking at our taxes, especially Sill's tax and use tax, and how we're starting to see a changing dynamic in those as well. Real quick, so in the tax section, you'll see that I'm forecasting $29,286,000, so that's about 800 that's about $800,000 more than what was included in the budget. Property taxes, right now, we budgeted just about $6 million, but if you look about five years ago, the city actually collected nearly $8 million in property taxes. And just as a reminder, when I talk about property taxes, it's real estate only. There is no personal property tax in the city of Independence. So we have seen a decrease there. I know we were all worried, you know, looking at Jackson County and the number of adjustments and hearings that are still ongoing and will be ongoing through the end of March, but right now we are tracking to meet budget, so we'll keep an eye on that, make sure we're not seeing any clawbacks as we see those hearings conclude. But, you know, right now, we are trending on track with our property tax. Sales tax, so this revenue source has actually seen a jump of about $3.5 million over the last five years, but this has primarily been driven by inflation. So we all know that in the past couple of years, we've been looking at, you know, 78% inflation, so that's really what's been the drive between that growing. And then the other area, while our sales tax is in a good place and we're on track to meet budget this year, we have to keep an eye on what's happening at Jefferson City because it seems like every year, there's a new bill that's introduced that would either limit or take away the revenues that we raise there. Use tax, so I actually have some slides that are dedicated to use tax, but we have seen a pretty significant growth, outpacing what has been budgeted year over year, although I will caution, that's one area where I don't expect to see that type of extended growth year over year. I think we're probably topping out on that now, but it has offset somewhat the slower growth in our sales tax. So it's a very good thing that voters, you know, went out and supported that a few years ago and got it passed for city of Independence because it has certainly provided critical funding in several areas. The next one down that we have is franchise fees. You know, this is another area where we see a lot of interference from Jefferson City, passing legislation that either limits what we can raise. I know right now, they're working so that, you know, cable, we've seen a decrease. We're still able to have a cable franchise fee, but working to limit video service providers, so charges that would go against Netflix and things like that. Our pilots, we've seen growth in our pilots as well, primarily with the electric utility, but the thing to keep in mind here is that can fluctuate greatly just based on weather, you know, when our customers are paying their bills, if they're able to pay their bills, and so we can't depend too much on growth there. And then lastly, we have all other revenues. So this would include court fees, fees for services, intergovernmental revenue. So you'll see a decrease from the actuals in 2021 and 2122, where we were getting money from ARPA that's no longer coming in.
Before you leave this slide, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
So how much, because I know there are multiple bills rolling in Jeff City to eliminate sales tax on food. What would that cost us in our revenues?
It's about 10% in our sales tax. It's a pretty substantial number. Do you remember the number off the top of your head?
Just to quantify that across all the funds, so both the general fund and then the special sales tax funds approved by the voters, that'd be about $11 million.
Okay. And my next question is, there's been legislation passed to cap property tax for people over the age of 62, and do we have any idea what that effect will have on our portion of the property tax? I mean, it's a very small amount of what you pay in your property taxes, but I'm just curious what the impact would be.
We're still kind of trying to drill down on that. It's been a little difficult to arrive at that number based on the demographics, but we're trying to work with the county to quantify that.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Okay. So here is just another look at our revenues. So you'll see that our top three revenues currently represent 65% of all general fund revenue. That is down slightly from 66% last year. So, you know, whether it's just we have temporary fluctuations somewhere else, or maybe it's a little bit more diversification of our revenue sources, which would be a good thing, you know, the top three are making up a slightly less percentage. Sales tax is certainly susceptible to economic cycles and it's definitely been, you know, growing because of the rate of inflation in the past few years. Right now, our use tax is growing at a much faster rate than sales taxes, although it's difficult to come up with what that is exactly, just because of a lot of the legislation that's expanded, what we're even able to collect on the use tax basis. Franchise fees, there's an uncertain long-term outlook. You know, when we look at electric and gas, things like energy efficiency will certainly play into that. And we have technological changes, which we've seen in telephone and cable, and those will continue. And so, you know, franchise fees are just another area that we have to look at year over year. So right now, total general fund projected revenues for 23-24, I'm sorry, I should say 23-24, are about $81 million. So when we're looking at sales tax, one of the things that I do is I take the sales tax receipts and then I put them into the actual business activity month. So with the delays that come from businesses paying into the Department of Revenue and then them sending that money directly to the city, we see a little, a few month delay. So I'm talking about October 2023 right now, which is the most recent month that I have. On the left side, you see the receipts total, so you'll see those fluctuations in, you know, month over month, but also looking year over year. So if we're looking at October 2023 compared to October 2022, we are seeing a growth of about 2.1%. On the right side is the last 12 months total retail sales value. So this takes everything on a rolling basis. So if the year ended for us on October 2023, we would have seen a 4.2% annual growth in our economy. So that 2.4 million, I'm sorry, 2.4 billion is what we've seen over the past 12 months in our brick and mortar stores. So it also means Independence has enjoyed $100 million in retail growth since October 2022, but you'll notice that following the post-COVID trend, that growth is declining, but it's also declining as inflation declines. This is just another way to look at our retail sales compared to, you know, over the year percent change in CPI. So you see, back in COVID, CPI was higher than our retail sales, flip-flopped for a while in 2021, went back the other way in '22 through about January '23, and now we're on the right track again. So this is just a little bit closer look at our use tax. So Missouri was the last state to adopt changes to their use tax after the Wayfair decision. So now we go off of what is called an economic nexus. So retailers who make at least $100,000 of retail sales to buyers in the state of Missouri during the previous 12-month period must collect use tax from Missouri buyers and then that gets remitted to the city of Independence. Missouri does have some flexibility when they choose the 12 months that they're reviewing, and so this is why we have seen since January of 2023 such an increase in our use tax. And this is also why I'm saying we're starting to kind of most likely slow down on that because I just think that we're starting to truly capture everyone that's going to be in that economic nexus and it most likely will not continue to the same level. So you can just see compared to 2020 to 2021, that the number of quarter one payments to the Department of Revenue has nearly doubled and that this is also, the number of payers has also nearly doubled. And then this next little box here, it shows from '21 to '23, our top 20 use taxpayers. So you can see that not only has, you know, their actual receipts and what they've paid to the city of Independence increased, but they're also making up a smaller portion of what we're paid, which provides us a better foundation in case one of these businesses were to go out of business or something like that happens. There's more businesses there still paying to the city of Independence.
So when you talk about a taxpayer there, like is a taxpayer, Amazon a taxpayer, for example, or is it somebody that, you know, is a subcontractor of Amazon? I mean, I'm just trying to get a sense for how far down it goes in the food chain.
It could be both, depending on what the agreement. I mean, for the most part, Amazon collects, you know, the taxes on behalf of their taxpayers and so they were already being caught in those, but it certainly could be, I mean, it could be sales on Etsy. It just depends on who's making the sales. It can be on construction materials that are sold. You know, it's just all the real, you know, you know, everyone that has a business across the United States. So it really just, it depends. I mean, for the most part, you know, we see a lot of large taxpayers that have already been collecting on behalf, but there's also a lot of just new, smaller taxpayers that have come in since the legislation has changed.
And they have to be, sell $100,000 just in Missouri in order to be able to be?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
It has to be to Missouri, but like I said, Missouri can kind of choose the 12-month period that they're reviewing. So that allows them to capture more when they're able to do that. And just as a reminder, that a consumer will never pay both a sales tax and a use tax. I was like to, you know, remind everyone of that, but yes. So use tax has certainly become a much larger percentage of our revenues, both in the general fund and most of our funds. So this one provides us kind of an overview. So when the use tax was passed, we pledged $4 million annually to the police department, which goes into their own separate use tax fund, and then it grows by CPI each year. Additionally, we pledged $762,750 to animal services with the same conditions, that it would grow by CPI. So those funds saw a 2.5% increase in '22-23, a 9.3% increase in '23-24, and a 4.5% increase in '24-25 is what will be budgeted. So quite a significant difference. I think when you're looking at that police use tax, it will go from almost 4.5 million to 4.7 million next budget year for the police. But you can see that overall, the waterfall that occurs after they reach their budgeted amounts, all of our sales tax funds have enjoyed an increase and will beat budget this year. So since we have been talking about taxes, this is just a quick comparison of the base sales tax rates for us and our neighboring cities. You will see that Independence is definitely on the lower end of those, both city sales tax and use tax, also on the lower end of the real estate tax. So when we talk about why we say that we have some revenue issues here in the city of Independence, we're really playing in a little bit different ballpark than maybe some of our surrounding cities. So when we see them say that they have maybe a budget surplus or they don't see as many constraints, this is one of those reasons that's leading to it. And then, of course, you can see that there is no personal property tax for city of Independence. And then this year, you know, while we are capped by the Hancock Amendment on our real estate to only see a certain percentage increase in our real estate tax, our levy did decrease from .6059 down to .4759. So moving on to a comparison of our revenues and our expenditures in the general fund. So you will see we are projected to finish the year with a surplus of about $1.9 million in the general fund. This is what will get us up to that 16% required reserve. So it's not really, oh, we have a surplus that we can spend. We really need to use that to build up that general fund reserve. And let's see, I'm going to go ahead and skip a couple of slides ahead so that I can show you this, but so while in the 23-24 forecast, we are at our reserve, you can see in future years that, you know, the work's not done, that, you know, we're really going to have to take a year-over-year, you know, perspective to balancing the budget as we continue to fix some of the structural issues that are leading to that deficit. Go back to this one. So that shows you here how that deficit continues to grow in the out years. It doesn't look quite so bad when you're looking at it on this graph, but when you pay attention to how much the dollars actually are, it becomes a lot more significant. So for example, in the 24-25, you know, pre-budget work, we're already sitting between $3 million to $3.5 million deficit. So it's something that, you know, we'll really have to take a hard look at this year and figure out how to get that budget balanced. So I know that a lot of you have been interested in priority-based budgeting. We spend a lot of time talking about reallocation of our resources. So this just gives you a little snapshot. We're currently in the peer review process of scoring all of our programs against our strategic plan. So departments have gone in, they've done their work, they've allocated out their costs, they've developed all of their programs and services, and so now we're just going through and double-checking that work. But what we do have are Transit, so ComDev, and Health and Animal Services last year participated in a pilot program to help us figure out how to best implement and roll this out at city of Independence. And so I polled Health and Animal Services, just to give you a little bit of idea of what kind of data from a high-level view that we can start looking at. So on this slide, you see two categories here, a safe and welcoming community and an engaged community. The budget dollars that are on both of these slides are the same budget dollars. These are all the same programs, but they're ranked and rated against two different areas of our strategic plan. So we have, these are part of our community programs, so we have an engaged community, an innovative economy, a safe and welcoming community, and a well-planned city. So these will be things that kind of our public-facing departments are ranked and rated against, and then we also have our governance programs, which will be a high-performance organization and a financially sustainable organization. Typically in that, you will see more departments like finance, IT, HR, that get rated against those. So just real quick, you can see that Health and Animal Services rank pretty strongly against a safe and welcoming community, and then maybe not quite as much against an engaged community, but there's certainly some impact going from none all the way to extreme. This also shows another area called basic program attributes, which there are five areas. Every single program will get ranked against these, or BBAs is what we call them for short, and they are demand, population served, recovery cost, mandate, and reliance. So you can see that for Health and Animal Services, a large percentage of their overall budget, you know, the demand for those programs has been relative you know, the, the demand for those programs has been relatively flat. And then maybe a smaller percentage has actually seen, seen an increase in demand from the community. Same thing with reliance. So this actually gives us two different ways to look at the, the programs. City is a sole provider, or currently the sole provider of program. Or there are other entities that provide it, or could provide this service. So this is one of those areas where you might look and see if there's partnership opportunities. Are we duplicating services and that type of thing? And then lastly, this gives you, I'm sorry, this is actually the second to the last slide, but this gives you a look at each program. And then it shows you, you'll see the quartile, so it goes anywhere from least aligned to most aligned. And then it shows you that total cost of the program. So you might be wondering what's built into the total cost of the program. So through the allocation process, you can see that we have this one program, Animal Shelter Services, and we were able to assign the personnel costs, the non-personnel costs, and then if there's any revenue that's generated by this program. And so that breaks it down there all the way over in the right side with the program costs. And you're able to see line item by line item, how they play into each of those different programs and services that we're providing. All right, so opportunities to improve our forecast. So we've developed a true cost for all of our projects and then rated them against our strategic plan. Low priority programs are those that would be least in alignment. And so when we're talking about reallocating or restructuring low priority programs, this will help us to achieve a more structurally balanced budget. It's not an easy process. You know, it's likely that there's going to be programs and services that the community values that we have to take a hard look at and, and ask questions about, whether maybe we can, you know, raise additional revenues for it, or if there's other options. The main idea I want to convey is it's not to automatically cut that program out of the budget, but is to look at it, how can we more structurally fund it going into the future? So options to control our personnel expenditures. The personnel expenditures obviously are a huge percentage of the expenditures across the city as a whole. Our people are our assets. So we can look at staffing studies, if there are non-monetary employment incentives, and then also instituting performance reviews to help control the growth of wages. Reallocate current resources, both people and dollars, to those higher-performing programs that align more closely to the strategic plan. But just because a program aligns more directly to the strategic plan, doesn't mean that there's not any work to do there. So also just taking a look at those programs and seeing how we can make them more efficient. You know, a few years ago, we had recommendations from the overtime report, so continued to implement those to help control overtime costs and control our personnel expenditures. And then continue to capitalize on opportunities to enhance our revenues. So when we're looking at sales tax, we really need to consider how do we truly grow our sales tax revenues versus, you know, being low growth, slow growth, like we've seen in the past few years. So this just breaks down and shows you how much of our salaries go, or how much of our budget goes to, to salaries. It's a huge amount, about $126 million across all departments. Operating expenses obviously make up a significant portion as well. Debt service, you know, we have a lot of focus on debt. We talk about debt, but a relatively small amount overall. Just to give you a look at the debt load here, I should have given you a comparison to last year because we have seen decreases in our debt, you know, across all of these, whether it's revenue bonds, other annual appropriations, capital leases, and then, you know, the, the tax increment financing loans payable. So as we continue to see those close out. And then I know that geo-bonds have been something that we have been talking about in the city here recently. This is just to illustrate that other cities, other neighboring cities also make use of geo-bonds. So City of Independence would not be alone in that effort. So in summary, simply cutting programs and services is not the answer. That's where priority-based budgeting comes into play, really helps us look overall at the impact of, of cutting services. Or, you know, instead of just saying we're going to cut 10% across all departments in the general fund, what does that really mean for the programs and services that we're offering? Budget pressures, you know, transit, I know that Tom has been working very diligently on that now that we are going to start seeing a decrease in the available funding. You know, and then obviously both our employee health insurance, it continues to grow at a pace that outpaces CPI and our revenue growth, retiree health insurance, same thing. You know, loggers, we're, we're going to be seeing increase in loggers over the next few years. So that will be a continuing trend. So that just leads to overall personnel costs increasing. Again, costs of goods and services expected to increase with inflation and outpacing our revenue growth. And that concludes.
Any questions? Please proceed.
So you talked about our revenues that had grown, I think, between 3% and 4%. But inflation has just been brutal for us. And it's not just overall inflation. Some of our services, we've seen really sizable increases. I'm thinking of paving roads and some of our chemicals, which are much higher than the 7% or 8% that you're seeing just on the, on the regular side. Are we able to calculate kind of the inflationary pressure that we've seen across our programs to get a sense? Because you, you obviously are going to have an eroding base when you're expending so much more for base services versus how much you're growing your revenue.
Yeah, I mean, we would have to just go back and look at what's been budgeted in the same year, you know, in previous years. But, but yes, I mean, that is definitely a consideration when I'm talking, you know, to municipal services or parks, where it seems like just the basic upkeep of the ball fields has become significantly more expensive. And then compound that on the fact that sometimes they just can't get the materials that they need. So supply-side issues are not expected to get any better in the next couple of years. And so that will certainly be one of the key areas that we have to watch that's going to continue, you know, pushing those expenditures higher as well.
And we have been in a hiring, I don't know, it's not a freeze, it's a chill, I don't remember the term you've used, but trying to keep our staff size manageable. Are there areas where we have made any progress on that without hurting services? Or places where there's proposed increases just so that we can, you know, that hundred, the, the huge number that we're paying in staff salaries and expenses is just something we have to keep a, a close eye on?
Yeah, so for the current fiscal year, I mean, the hiring chill, it's, it's essentially still in effect, right? So we, we knew which positions we wanted to chill. We're still expected to exceed our personnel expenses in the general fund this year, mostly driven by overtime. But that includes positions, positions that weren't included in the hiring chill. And it's just very difficult to hire for those positions right now. Or you have a long lead timeout from hiring to actually getting those people into the workforce in, you know, on the schedules. So it's a compounding of different issues. So it's not just the growth in personnel expenditures, but it's also the difficulty hiring and getting people on staff to keep things like overtime in check.
Thank you.
Anyone else? And I think Mr. City Manager has got a couple of questions if I could. And Melissa, I just think a great presentation from your perspective. And I know when you did the presentation before on the assessments, I thought that was just excellent. It was very simple. I wished other people would have seen it because it would have been very, very helpful for people in the county to have seen the, how simply you put that so they would understand their taxes and the, and the impact of it. So I thought that was excellent.
Thank you.
So again, another great presentation in that regard. If, if we didn't have the use tax passed by, and I don't know if Councilmember Hobart, if you had worked on that, or if you were on the council when they did that?
They, the city passed the initial use tax prior to being on the council. But it covered a very small portion. It wasn't until way far past that we captured the order.
Right, yeah, they had, and I, I think without that, how much would we be short if we hadn't passed the use tax? I know some communities haven't yet. And that's got to be a real drag on their, on their revenue.
Yeah, you know, we obviously would not have been able to add the 30 new officers in the police department, nor would we have been able to adjust the pay scale to take our department among the highest paid in the, the metro. Of course, also the support for the animal shelter, but more importantly has been the waterfall effect to the other sales tax funds and the general fund. So I don't think it's outlandish to say you'd be looking in the six to seven figures minus the amounts that have flown to the police and animal services fund. We, we would be having a much different conversation, certainly not about expansion of services and more about some pretty draconian reductions.
Yeah, I think we need to give that council and, and if I'm correct, Mayor Wer really led that charge and was successful in it. If we didn't have that, we'd be in serious financial trouble today if.
We would be. You are correct.
Yeah, so kudos to that council and to the mayor for doing that. I know it was a heavy lift and they did a great job in that regard.
That tax was initially passed in 18.
Stone's right.
That's right.
Fall 21?
Yep, believe that was in November, but.
That's when the fire tax.
That's right.
Yeah, wouldn't it be fair to say that the reason that we have been able to achieve the fund balance that we have, you know, and then we're pretty much on, on target for, is because of the use tax?
Yeah, that, that infusion of funds helped close that loophole, which obviously was part of the informational items that went out in both of those elections. As consumers transition from brick and mortar to online, this allows us to capture that portion of those sales that had migrated. And absolutely, that has allowed us to put some stability back into our, our budget and our financial position.
Looking at the, the general bun, fund balance forecast, can't talk here. So you're projecting at this point, 27, 28 forecast, negative 5 million, well, 6 million maybe. What was that before, last time we looked at this? Do you recall?
It was 12 million.
Yeah, I was thinking that. So we, we've cut that about in half by, at this point. So that's, that's good news. Doesn't mean we don't have a long way to go, but, but that's, that's good news. The other comment I would have is that as we move into this priority-based budgeting, I think it's going to be really important for us to have some tutorials on how to read this stuff and, and how to interpret it for, as we look at going forward. I mean, it's, it's just going to be a whole different game change on, on how we, we do budgeting. So I think it's going to be, I, I'm hoping that you're planning some tutorial sessions for us.
Old dogs, new tricks type of thing?
Right, right. That's right.
Yeah, there is an entire data analysis section in, in the software that we use. So, you know, at, at toward the end of the month, we'll roll that out to, to departments because as they're going through their 2425 budget process and saying, hey, I can't, I, I need more, right? I, these are things that we need to do. We have increase in demand. Or what, maybe they have new mandates that are coming down from a state or a federal level. You know, we're going to be encouraging them to be using that data analysis and looking at the priority-based budgeting and saying, well, what can we do? Are, maybe there are programs that we've seen decline, you know, demand in, and maybe we can just reallocate the employees to go to the higher demand programs or the new programs that we need, we need to fund. Because the reality is, we're likely going to be working in the same set of revenues that we have existing now. And so, you know, aside from just cutting budgets, we need to start looking at a deeper level and saying, what maybe do we not need to do anymore? What maybe was a program from 20 years ago that was necessary in 2000 that's not now? And so, you know, that's the whole idea behind priority-based budgeting. So yes, there will be trading for both the departments. I know you all are excited to see it as well. And so we should be able to take a closer look at that in April and, you know, dig down into it more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
You know, when I came on council about three and a half years ago, almost four years ago, the. When I started on council, three and a half years ago or so, you know, the deficit started in 25, 26, 24, 25, somewhere in there. So we've pushed it off and part of that has been cuts, part of it's been budgeting, part of it's been new revenue streams. There's, it, it's all these little parts and pieces that Mr. Walker and his staff, along with some council, some council help, along with passing taxes, along with all, all the effort of, of city departments and everybody along the way has done to chip away at, at some of these budgetary issues, we are 100% headed in the right direction. We, along with some of the economic development that we've done and the successes that we've had, we, we are in a much better position than, than even those graphs show. I think we are, it, you don't want to see lines headed down on a budget or on projections. But we have marijuana revenue coming in. The use tax will probably continue to increase. They're just projections. We've got big economic projects on the horizon, economic development projections on the horizon. You know, I don't want it to be all doom and gloom. These, these discussions for four years have been 100% doom and gloom, believe me. Worse than doom and gloom. And Mr. Walker might agree finally, but they, they don't feel quite so bad as they used to. So coupled with the number of tiffs we've paid off and reduced, the debt load we've reduced, it, it really is a different day. We're switching our budgeting style to priority-based budgeting. That will be yet another, another chip, chipping away at doing some of the things that we don't need to do anymore probably. So anyway, I, I have a great deal of hope for where we're headed this next year and over the next few years. So proud of you and your staff, Mr. Walker, and excited for this, this budgeting that Ms. Sill and Ms. Gray has brought. So thank you.
I, I would add to that, Councilmember. I appreciate your comments. It, it's not always certainly been easy. There have been, you know, hard conversations to figure out our health insurance plan for our active employees. But a collaborative effort with our StayWell Committee and our Labor Coalition and our council, we've, we've made important strides there that put that towards a better path. Same goes for our retiree health insurance, finding solutions that allowed us to put that on a better path, but also to honor the commitments that were made when folks signed up to work for the city. The council certainly faced tough decisions about approvals for economic development projects and economic incentives, projects and economic incentives, but those have come online and are starting to bear the fruit of new revenue and new growth for our city as well. A bunch of little things like that that cumulatively have added up to make that line not so precipitous. Still got work to do to push that up, as you say, but yeah, it's a different conversation this year. We're not, you know, acting from a position of desperation or fear. We're able to start thinking more strategically and figure out how to balance all these priorities in a very thoughtful way, which is a sign of a healthy, financially stable organization.
Anything else? But no, excellent presentation.
Thank you.
And want to applaud you and your staff for a great job there, and look forward to the April presentation. I know Councilman Fears really looks forward to this because he loves this stuff, so I don't quite have his enthusiasm, I apologize for that, but I know he is so excited about April. He could hardly wait, can you hardly wait?
That's right.
Yeah, so very good, but thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
It doesn't get any better than that.
It doesn't get any better than that, that's what he said, it's, you know, so that is excellent, thank you very much. Perfect. Mr. City Manager, staff reports and commissions. So Suzanne, what do you have for us?
The city clerk's office has received, thank you, the city clerk's office has received applications to reappoint Carl Blair and appoint Cindy Troutman to the personnel board. Staff request direction is to adding resolution to the next regular meeting, appointing these individuals to the above board.
Okay, very good, excellent. Any other things to add to that, Mr. Walker?
Nothing further tonight, sir.
Any other thing, closing comments? All right, with that being said, we'll adjourn this meeting, thank you all.